All your advice and assistance on getting these meetings together tonight.
That's what I do.
It's what makes the town work. Stephanie is probably still out in the wilderness someplace.
He was on there before, on here.
Well, she comes back all over again.
Okay, fine. And first, Kirk, I see you are attending here. Did you have anything to say?
Unmute it. There you go.
Yes, I just wanted to say again how Jan and I appreciated all the support and encouragement we got from the board. And we were pleased the way things went this afternoon. Ed's presentation was very complete, thorough, and impressive. And we're certainly hoping for the result that this nomination was designed to achieve.
Well, we're pleased to have your site nominated. You did a lot of the work for us. And that was very helpful to us expediting things as much as we could. So you're also to be complimented for your historical interest. And for your previous work, which not many may know about, namely, the production of the Hay Ground Heritage Area Report that led to its being designated heritage area by the town of Southampton. So that's to be appreciated, too.
Thank you.
With that, we can proceed with the rest of our regular session of our special meeting that was called. And we have the applicant present. Scott is here. The paperwork for, if you recall, the paperwork at our December meeting was not complete for an application for a certificate of appropriateness. Since that time, we did receive the paperwork and that was distributed to each and every member. And as well, we did receive some additional elements in terms of the difference between this proposal and the one that was originally proposed and approved by the Landmarks Board. And if I can, I will try to share my screen with respect to this material. David, you produced the graphics comparison of the two series of elevations for 189?
Yes, I did.
Thank you. That took a load of work off of, you know, what I was proposing to do. I believe you can see the west elevation, which is both the one that was approved and the west elevation that is proposed anew. The, let's see if I can get the view a little bit bigger. I'm sorry, that takes the side-by-side comparison out. In any case, pictures have been taken to reflect the current status of the building on which there is the stop-work order. The perspective of what is sketched and the perspective that comes from ground level is a little bit different in terms of the impact that you get. The west elevation, if you recall, is one of two elevations that are visible from the public ways, essentially. The south elevation is the one where Narrow Lane proceeds. If I can get that, I took, I had to back my way up against the house across the street in order to get the complete photo today that I made of the west elevation that shows the current condition. And as you can see, we have the revised plan and the one that was approved. The other elevations are less consequential in the sense that they are not, they are either not visible or only barely possible visible between the spaces between houses. I have some comments to make about this, but does anyone want to ask or get clarification on the sketches or the photo imagery that we have for this project? I can't see everybody's picture on this screen, so I would have to hear a voice if somebody wants to say something. Okay, well, let me just refer to another aspect of this. And that is the standards of treatment that are recommended by the Department, the Secretary of Interior, which I can try to bring up here. There are four standard, standards that are set out as recommendations for the treatment of historic properties. One is for preservation, which is how to treat basically very historic properties that need to be dealt with just in order to keep them in existence. The second one is rehabilitation, which is associated with making compatible the uses of an existing historic property. The third is restoration of historic structure. That's kind of the approach that was used for, if anyone is familiar with, the Nathaniel Rogers House in Bridgehampton. And the fourth standard is that for reconstructing historic buildings, which is basically making a carbon copy, if you will, as much as possible of an original structure in a completely new form. So those are the four standards. The one that appears to apply to us is rehabilitation for compatible uses, which talks about the way in which additions are made to buildings. This is the relevant language of recommendations for the Secretary of Interior's standards. If I can, maybe I can blow this up a bit more, if I don't blow it up altogether. Okay. So basically, it talks about creating or constructing a new addition on a secondary elevation or limiting the size and scale in relationship to the historic building, particularly the historic feature of the building that caused it to be, was a central cause of landmarking it in the first place. It's to construct it in a way that has the least possible loss of historic materials so that character-defining features are not obscured, damaged, or destroyed. The new addition is to be compatible with the historic building. And the recommendation to ensure the addition is subordinate and secondary to the historic building and compatible enassing scale materials and the relationships of solids to voids and color. So that is one page of the recommendations. That is page, let me see if I can get the page number on that. That's page 156 of the 2017 Secretary of Interior Recommendations on Rehabilitations of Historic Buildings and Related New Construction. The next page, using the same forms, materials, color range of the historic building in a manner that does not duplicate it, but distinguishes the addition from the original building. I think there was some mention of that at our December meeting. "Basing the alignment, rhythm, and size of the window and door openings on a new addition to those of the historic building. Incorporating a simple recess and small-scale hyphen or connection to visually separate the addition from the historic building." This is not something that I've often seen, but it happens to have been done to the Topping Rose Inn when that was restored. They have a physical separation between a new volume and the old building itself. And to distinguish the addition from the original building by setting it back from the wall plane of the historic building. And that's page 157. And page 158, "Ensure the addition is stylistically appropriate for the historic building and consider the design for a new addition in terms of its relationship to the historic building as well as the historic district, neighborhood, and setting." So that is what I found on the, in the Secretary of Interior's standards for rehabilitation. I don't know if anyone else had looked at them in recent times, but this basically is, I think, what applies for us. Do we have any comments from anyone about those requirements and standards?
Well, if we look at the addition, trying to follow those standards, the size of the addition now appears to be more massive than the original house. So the scale of it has gotten too large, not on that side, but the opposite, although you do see it there as well. But the previous roof design that was approved gave the addition a smaller feeling and scale than the front portion. As we look at that photograph that was taken of the front, it really is larger than the original house. It's also mimicking it. It's difficult, if you don't know the house, to determine which was the original house and which would be the addition. Secretary of Interior says that if you sort of step it back, that helps a little bit. But the fact that the roof has now gotten taller, that part has gotten more massive than the original part, it seems to have more importance. The original facade also had more windows in a smaller area. The addition seems to have smaller windows, fewer of them. And in order to fill the wall, has now interjected shutters to kind of create more sort of fulfillment of that wall. It also introduced the round gable end vent, which we haven't seen anywhere on the house before. I'd prefer to see a ridge vent and soffit vents than something on the gable, because again, it's not from the original house.
Thanks, Bill. And I agree that the proposed revision is more of an offense to the original historic quality, which is basically this classical facade for the house, that it does in fact produce more of a diminution of that classical facade.
Right. And as you look at that gabled end, and then you look at the previously approved addition next to it, it takes on a secondary appearance because the roof appears less important, having turned it to the side and actually hipped the end a little bit. Now it's turned towards the front, and it's larger than the original house. It starts to take on more importance, even though there's less detail in it as far as the window fenestrations go. But the corner pilasters and the detailing of it is the same. It makes it difficult then for somebody who doesn't know the house from before the addition. It'd be difficult for them to know which was the original house.
Also, the elimination of the chimney on the right, it proved, I mean, would have provided a little bit of more of a bounce because it was higher, but it's been eliminated. It's already gone, of course, and the fireplace that would have accompanied it.
Yes, yeah. So I think I'd be more comfortable if this gable was hipped back, similar, again, to the hip that was previously approved, just something to give that part a little less importance than the other section of the house.
You're suggesting that this aspect right here be snipped off, slanted back in order to distinguish it?
Yes, yeah.
Interesting idea.
Yeah. And I think that would reduce the scale of it a little bit visually from the street. Particularly when you look at the photo, you know, you really see that that's much larger than the other elevation.
Sorry, Bill. Could you just say it again, what you want to snip back?
Okay. If you were to cut the roof off, cut the triangle right off the top, so to speak, and instead of it being an upright gable-ended wall, the roof would then pitch back from this point, forming...
Like the drawing?
More like the original approved drawing, yes.
But not lower it? Match the roof behind it?
Right. I mean, I'd rather it was lower, but I'm thinking that if we can accommodate, you know, some of what they did for the need that they did it and get a result that matches the house better or suits the house better, then I would be happy.
It's definitely overwhelming, you know, I drive by it every day. And it's, it has done all the things that it says it shouldn't do. It's taken on the importance. That is the original house.
Right.
Any other comments?
I mean, I agree with what Bill said. I drove by today, probably right before you sent the photos, Ed. And what you, the photos you sent were accurate. You know, when you're closer to it, it appears, I mean, if you're going north, it appears to be closer to the same height, but coming south on Lumber Lane, the farther back you get, it really accentuates the height and the volume of it. And those, the photos you took showed that. Because it depends on exactly the angle, but it's definitely larger. Of course, Michael passes it more than I do, so it's in pursuit to it.
And can we, can we take a look at the other side of the house where the dormers were repeated?
Before we... Could I just add a couple of comments on that? I too feel that the front facade is really, really, that to me. And kind of, I like your suggestion, we're shipping that front roof back. But I would like to see an elevation of that before, you know...
Stephanie, you're breaking up a lot. We're hardly hearing you.
Okay. I too feel that the addition is, to me, overwhelms the original volume, the original historic structure, is something begun to minimize the volume and the bulk and the appearance of that addition. I like Bill's suggestion of perhaps shipping the roof back, but I would like to see an elevation of that, a drawing of that before, you know, having a...
Can't hear you, Stephanie.
Okay.
Can you call on your phone and just use the computer to view the screen?
Yeah, neither one of these phones seems to be working. I'll mute this.
Yeah, I think anything that we agree upon, we should definitely see it in drawing form before we give a final okay on it.
Other thoughts? Well, I don't know if the applicant's architect is close by.
I don't believe the, my architect is able to join the call.
Uh huh, okay, Scott. Other thoughts about it? If not, I think what we have to do is postpone consideration to see whether or not we want to approve a certificate of appropriateness with some kind of modification that might prescribe a change to the roof at a future meeting. We might be able to potentially deal with this on the 18th if somebody got a drawing to us before then. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yes.
There seems to be a consensus on it.
Does the applicant have direction for what you want them to draw?
Bill, you're suggesting a hip roof version. There probably is some variations among those things. Can you put some written guidance together?
Okay.
And we will forward that to the applicant to see what they can do. I hate to inconvenience you any further, but if we try to get something for, potentially for meeting review on the 18th, it would kind of require a quick prescription.
And should we look at the other side before we...
Oh, yes. Okay, let's get back to the south elevation that we were looking at.
We just identified the people that are panelists?
Pardon?
I see we have a new panelist. Could we just have that person identified?
Yeah, I'm on the phone.
Stephanie.
No, there's a Mike, there's a Mike K.
That is my father, Michael Cosas, who's advising and helping on the project.
Okay, that's fine. I was just curious who's on.
So we, here we have the south elevation, both in drawing form and the current picture. I will say that if you're on the road, most of this hedge, the view, you can barely see the upper half of the windows as the line of sight to this side.
So do we know in the original house whether that dormer was original to the house? Or was that an addition later?
That dormer was, I believe, 1942 by Arthur Newman, the owner at the time. He was the one who also put on the, a lot of the one-story addition that is on, now replaced by the two-story. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So I didn't have any objection to adding a second dormer in the shed in between it. The one thing I was concerned about is in the one-story section towards the rear, previously there was a large freeze under the fascia of the house. And in the newer drawing on the bottom, that detail has been removed from it. And I was wondering if that could be replaced. I understand that the window, well, actually, previously they interrupted it. Now it seems like that detail has disappeared, and a chimney has appeared there. Again, I have no objection to the chimney. I was just wondering if that trim detail could be returned to it.
Yeah. I don't know if you can see the large photograph I have of the house, which displays some of the, what you're talking about.
They also eliminated the chimney on the historic portion. It's no longer on the proposed plans.
Yep.
And they added a window on the first floor on the front of the house.
Yeah, again, I didn't object to those. And also now, the second-floor roof line has been continued, I guess, along with the second floor, over this side entrance. So now there's a little niche there. So I did actually want to say something about that. I was wondering what the detail of the column or post was. You know, definitely I didn't want to see a little eight-inch round Doric column there. I was hoping that perhaps it could be something square. And if you look at the front elevation where the door trim has a, sort of that column detail built into the wall with a little recess in it, it would be nice if this column could have those recesses in the faces of it as well to sort of mimic that look.
Are you offering that in a sense of... Uh, are, are you offering that in a sense of, uh, design advice or as a prescription?
I guess as a prescription.
Something, another line to add to the written comment that, that, that you'll be drafting then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I'm just making, yeah, I just want to be, uh, make it clear that I, I'd prefer not to see a little round column there. Something with more of a postmodern appearance or something, uh, that definitely the trim on the house and things, a flat post, a square post would be more befitting the house.
Question on the windows, are they, it's hard to tell from the renderings. You know, how they're set up. Are they all six over six?
Yeah, if you look at the photo, you can see that they are. At least the second floor ones above the hedge that you can see are six over six, yes.
Okay. It, it might be good to have a, a written description of the materials along with the plans. Uh, you know, what the siding is, the colors, um, things like that, uh, so that when we approve a COA, uh, we can reference specifically, you know, a very detailed description of what's proposed, uh, so that there's no question about what was approved. I think that the plans are a little lacking at this point relative to the details. They certainly are more detailed than the original elevations that we approved. They don't even show what the siding was going to be on those approved plans.
Do you not object to the amount of windows on the first, on the second floor?
Um, can you say that again, Martha?
Do you not object to the size of the extension and the amount of windows that are added versus what was approved? Is that not a problem for anybody? Just the whole size of the work being done?
On narrow lane, Ed, can you scroll to the narrow lane elevation?
Um, as Ed mentioned, if you're on narrow lane, you have to really look up and look for that because your eyes are pretty much going to the stop sign and lumber lane. It's also a cut through there, so there's a lot of traffic. I think the only people looking as you are going north, if you take a right on narrow, you get a quick view of it. But I don't think you would notice the one dormer versus the two in the, the extra one in the shed as much. But unless you're the neighbor where Ed was standing, that's probably about the only view that, um, you would actually get the full view of that. But also, of course, missing on, on that side is just, Bill, how do you feel about that missing chimney on the front?
Um, well, definitely, uh, a chimney inside the house would have been more befitting the original house. Uh, the one now proposed is on the far right side of that drawing and it, and is completely outside of the house. Yeah, I'd prefer to see the chimney kept, but I can understand that probably that fireplace and the chimney um, would have all had to be reconstructed. May not have had a flue liner, may not have had the proper clearances to the wood framing, so.
The chimney was completely structurally unsound and dangerous, which is why it was removed.
I looked for it in the original application and I didn't see it mentioned one way or the other that I could find. But maybe in there, I just, I was unable to find.
I, I can testify to how old chimneys rot away. I've, I had two removed from this 1840 house, uh, simply because the interior brick collapsed inward, uh, and they became unstable, so. And they did not have flue liners.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So other comments to be offered to the applicant as to, uh, what would be satisfactory for a certificate of appropriateness?
Well, could we go to the, um, that was the south elevation, so I guess the east elevation?
Okay, we'll go back and take another. I don't.
Right, so because
I don't have a picture.
Okay, um, because this is the rear of the house, so to speak, and you don't really see it from the street. Um, I didn't really feel that putting a hip on that gable was necessary like it was at the opposite side. Um, again, I'm, I'm not fond of the round louver, but, uh, I did, I didn't feel that we had to have the hip here just because we had it at the other end.
Just to make a quick comment on the round louver, that's just a drafting error and we have no intention of including that on either the back or the front elevation. And, and just as a further comment, as we mentioned in our proposal and presentation on the 21st of December, we were rushing to put together, um, a new set of plans such that we could recommit for both a COA and a building permit amendment, given we had started doing actual construction. And so we didn't have, you know, uh, things like a, a small round louver vent. Um, you know, we didn't go back to the architect to have him re-correct that prior to submission, but wanted to give some
Any, any other questions to be offered? So we have a little bit of a shopping list to, uh, provide, uh, to, uh, for the application. And, uh, Scott, you have a general idea of what is being asked for?
I've sat here and listened to what the board has to say. I've, um, taken notes, but it would certainly be most efficient and, uh, most helpful if the board can put together their list of recommendations. We will do our best to update, um, rendering for this group to preview at the January 18th meeting. Um, you know, I would obviously ask if you can try to turn that around as quickly as possible such that have our architects, um, you know, work in advance of the 18th, that would be very much appreciated. Uh, aside from that, you know, we are, are hearing your thoughts. There are obviously the largest being the change to the extension on the front facade. You know, I think it, there's a few new faces on this panel here tonight. Ed, I think it might be helpful to, to show some of the photos that we showed of the front elevation in the January, uh, sorry, on the December 18th meeting. If you could pull those up, that might be helpful.
Whoa. Uh, let's see if I, those were, um, what pictures were those?
Ed, you had gone to the house and you had taken about 10 photos, maybe worthwhile to show this group those photos.
Okay, let me see if I can go for an archaeological dig here.
Were those photos included in the, uh, original application? I have those right here if those are the ones.
I think, they perhaps
I'm referencing the photos that Ed took, um, in the middle of December.
Oh, okay.
Those might, those might be the Martha Green's photos.
I, I was only able to find one that Martha took. I, I can share that on my screen right now if you want.
Uh, well, I have, uh, Martha's photos here and we'll see if those are the ones that are being talked about. The question is, how do I get to the next? The next photo here, which
I think you can just try hitting the right arrow.
There we go, here, yep, there we go. So those are the December photos.
My, my question to the board is based on these perspectives, which are frank, frankly, the perspectives that most people driving by the home are going to digest this house from. Um, and, and the perspectives by which you really see the historical structure standing forward six feet. Pictures that you see, the extension is actually several feet, uh, more narrow, um, from side to side and thus giving a much broader and, um, prominent structure to the historical component of the house, um, which in, in a very significant way lessen the impact of the height of the extension versus the historical house, which, as mentioned and presented to this group on the December, um, 21st meeting, is, I believe, three feet higher than what was approved. And I guess the question to, more so to the group would be if you go back to sort of a front, if you were to hip this roof to the same height and snip the triangle, while carrying that ridge line from the historic structure and flipping the ridge line, I think what you'll see in the renderings is that it's actually a much more uh, pronounced and prominent, uh, structure. And so, the purpose of having you pull up these photos again is just to show the rest of the folks who may not have been on that December meeting, um, some other perspectives and, uh, and someone can potentially correct me if I'm wrong, but a few of you have mentioned, um, you know, the, the impact from the street with its incorporation of landscaping. Is that uh, is that, you know, something that's taken into account under these criteria? That's a question for the board. But particularly, if you can't see something from the street, how is, how is the uh, criteria impacted or, you know, the guidelines impacted, if, if at all?
Understanding is, is what it, it, what you see with or without landscaping is what we actually and mentally, I'm sure we do incorporate some, what the screening provides, but if, if the next person removes the screening, then you'll see the structure, period. And I will say, I saw those photos before, but when I drove by it today, I assume Martha got out and walked and took different angles. The ones that Ed took are what I saw driving by, because I didn't get out of the car. And I saw the perspective that Ed took. That's what you would see from this, the street. Except when he's backed against the house.
I don't think we can take the landscaping into account because people might want to show their houses. It's a lovely drive into Main Street. I just think that the the scale of the gable is, it's just too big for the original house. And you don't see the historic view of it. So I did get out and walk, but I do like that people will walk and they do walk down that street. It should be encouraged. It's from the train station, so it's quite a nice place.
And when the house was landmarked, was there anything in the original approval um, that discussed the landscaping, maintaining the hedge along the one side or anything? Not having one on the front? Anything like that?
Uh, there was no description of landscaping as any condition, uh, for the landmarking.
Yeah, and, and, you know, more so landscaping too, you know, we have some town landmarks that are very difficult to see because of excessive landscaping. Uh, so in particular in a property like this, where you do have public streets on, on two sides of the property, I think we have to consider that those facades, if not fully visible now, will at some point in the future likely be fully visible.
Understood and, and agree. I, I was just more so making the comment that the existing landscaping from the front, from Lumber Lane, is such that there's 200-plus-year-old trees that went in bloom. Uh, you know, those are closest to the street, somewhat blocking what would be the view of that extension, particularly when driving south on Lumber Lane. Um, sorry, my, my one-month-old is crying in the background. Apologize. And in addition to that, there's actually a cherry tree that's planted directly in front of that extension. And I think that would limit a lot of that impact. I'm not sure if Ed or someone else could go to, or, or I guess whenever you have an opportunity, if you go to a, a Google Street View, you'll see those two very large mature trees, um, that are on the, the, the north side of the front of the property.
Yeah, they're, they're visible in the, in, you know, the photos that Ed took today. But
This is your cherry tree?
That's correct. And obviously, you know, in spring, summer and fall, you know, there's two large trees. Block a lot of that, what would be that extent, you know, extension view.
But the upper part is the consideration more than the lower part, the gable section.
Okay, uh, do we have any other questions on the architectural, uh, character of, uh, this project?
I have just one, one question. Is the pitch of the roof on the addition the same as the uh, existing or the historic volume?
It's, I don't know, but I, from the photograph, it looks similar, but let me see if you can get the, um.
I'll, I'll confirm with my architect.
Okay. That, that's not on any of the plans right now?
Yeah, just, just putting a triangle on it quick and sliding it along, they do match.
Okay. Oh, actually, there is something.
I read that it mimicked it, mimicked it, I think.
Okay.
Seven twelve pitch. And if, I don't know, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so exactly a seven twelve pitch as in the original house, as in the extension in the back. I want
I want to note that if you want us to put a hip roof on this, because the distance front to back is 27 feet versus 20 feet width wise, we're going to be up another three and a half feet higher than this ridge line with the hip roof. No, I think you want to reconsider that thought.
These are, these are, these are obviously items that we'll flesh out with our architects, but again, it'd be helpful for you to, to list exactly what the board is looking for. Such that we can come back, you know, well prepared on the 18th and, and present with all the information that we have.
One other suggestion I'd like to make, um, when you're, you know, adding details about finishes and colors and things. None of these plans show any detail about the windows and the number of lights, et cetera. So if that information could be added, uh, that would be helpful so we could really see what the appearance of the elevations will be.
Windows are in, they're all six over six.
Right, they're, but they're not shown on the elevations on your plans for the building.
We cannot, we can certainly, we can certainly update the plans, Stephanie. We'll do that for the 18th.
Thank you.
Among other things, one of the value of having the plans show them is that they're a reference point for the future. Should any other alterations be taken, uh, that might not be approved. Other concerns?
I, I want to bring up something else, but I don't want to do that until we're done talking about the architecture.
Any other questions on the architectural details of this project? If not, David, you're free to introduce a new line of thought.
I actually had a question, David, if you don't mind if, if I ask Bill just.
Go ahead. You're, you're probably going to bring up the same issue that I am.
Uh, my question is just, Bill, you had mentioned some of the freeze board on that back east extension. And you, I think your suggestion was to match the east extension on the historical volume.
Okay, I didn't follow that.
Uh, I thought you had a comment that, that you would like to see the freeze dental molding match uh, on that east extension with the historic volume on the east facade. Was that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. We absolutely would do that if that's the suggestion of the board. It just, I think prior to that, you had mentioned that you wouldn't want to see matching dental molding and freeze on the front facade because it would too, uh, it would look either too similar or would be problematic in differentiating which is the historical volume and, and which is not. So.
Right.
Sort of two, you're sort of telling me two different things there. So I just wanted to confirm what, what exactly the board's direct.
If, if we look at the previously approved south elevation, there's a larger freeze on the existing house than there is on the one story addition coming out the back. So I, I felt that that sort of made it a little subservient to the main part of the house. But then on the new proposed elevation, that smaller freeze on the back portion had been removed. So I, I think the fact that there's a difference in scale in the two. I, I liked it on the previously approved drawing, so that kind of an idea on the proposed. What was what I was suggesting.
And again, we actually like it as well and, and agree with you and, and plan on doing that, just a drafting and, and rendering difference.
Yeah.
But, but on the front facade, we, we obviously welcome the board's comments on what to do with the molding. Such that I think on the, on the prior call in December, we had suggested where one of the board members wanted to make a point to try to differentiate the two structures and, and, and having maybe a slightly different molding and trim and perhaps no dental aspect to it all. That would help that differentiation and would help the historic volume really stand out as the historic volume. But again, I, I, I'm at the direction, defer to the direction of the board.
Yeah, I don't think anybody brought that up tonight. I think since the last meeting, we've digested more and so yeah, that, that wasn't brought up tonight.
I think a hip roof would certainly differentiate the new volume.
As mentioned, the hip roof would require going higher, probably another, I'm not sure how many feet, but if that's okay with the board, then that's the board's priority.
I think if we tried to bring it to a point where the seven pitch was continued back until it met a pitch from the rear of the house, it would get taller. But, uh, there shouldn't, if, if we're doing the same pitch back to a short piece of ridge or ridge it goes all the way to the rear, there should be no increase in height.
I'm not sure that's feas, architecturally feasible, but we'll have our architects look at it. I, we obviously bittered, again, going back to why we ultimately moved from the original plans to the current ones where number one, it resulted in a flat roof, one pitch which would require metal roofing and not materials that are compatible with the historic structure. And also from a ceiling and window height perspective. But we, again, we didn't, we'll have our architects take another look.
Okay.
Any further? If not, David, you wanted to bring up another element here?
Uh, the, so the applicants have asked if there's certain work that could be undertaken and, and in light of the fact that the board is going to be asking for plans to be submitted before you make a decision on the COA. I suspect that they're still interested in getting the board's input on potentially some work that could be undertaken, that would not have an impact on the ultimate decision on the COA. Um, I think, and Scott, you can speak to this better than I can. Uh, I think they had been looking to continue doing work on the HVAC system. And putting in some doors and, and roofing the, uh, putting on shingles on the roof. Obviously that, that might not be something that could, could, that could continue pending the issuance of the COA or revised COA. So I believe Scott, that you are still interested in being allowed to do some limited work pending, uh, the issuance of a new COA.
Yes, it's accurate. The, the point being, we wanted to fully enclose the house so that we weren't taking water, snow, et cetera, on an unfinished roof. Given your comments tonight, I think we'd only ask to continue with the mechanicals and installing a few doors which are not visible from the street.
In the process of installing the mechanicals, would you be installing ductwork on the second floor? Uh, and the ceilings on the second floor that might, that might be impacted?
I think eventually we would, but we'd probably start with, uh, the first floor.
Okay.
Prior to the 18th.
So for the board's consideration, the, the building department would be, uh, has been considering issuing a, uh, a limited stop work order that would, that would identify what work could continue. The applicants would sign a, a waiver, uh, of any claims of vested rights as a result of putting in additional work. Prior to the issuance of a revised COA and a revised building permit. How does the board stand on identifying some of those items that could continue?
Well, there's no guarantee that we'll be satisfied on January 18th to issue a CO, uh, certificate of appropriateness. On the other hand, I, you know, the main volume is not something that we're talking about altering. It's the addition, the, and the roof elements on the addition. It would seem to me to be possible to allow shingling of the main volume and tarping the uh, roof of the new addition. With, you know, respect to trying to keep the weather out. That, you know, and the doors, as you indicate, uh, there's just a plywood, uh, sealer, I think, on the, uh, north, north side of the house where a door is supposed to be. So that is something that's not particularly important. It really is the question of the roof, uh, the roof ridge. That perhaps there shouldn't be further investment in at this time. Because that's the area of concern. Does that make sense to our board?
And the mechanicals, you're okay with that?
So we're talking about mechanicals, meaning HVAC systems, electrical, fireplace activity in the back and roofing the rear extension.
Right, the rear extension also is not something that I think is a, a matter of, uh, issue for us at the moment. Uh, so I myself would, you know, suggest to the board that we not have an objection there. And the mechanicals, the, you know, if you have, uh, heating equipment and so on, that can be installed without impacting the external configuration. Uh, or risk to, uh, what might be required for the addition. There shouldn't be any, uh, I think, shouldn't be any concern there. That's all kind of interior, uh, business. Is there, uh, are the board members have thoughts about this, you know, before we get too far along?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's important to, you know, to, um, you know, to button up the portions of the structure that really don't seem to be an issue at this point and I think the tarping of the roof on the, you know, the addition that's in question here is probably prudent. And mechanicals to the extent that they don't necessarily involve the second floor at this point in the addition is, is, uh, I don't have any particular concerns there.
So, uh, David, did you get a grasp of what seems to be a element of consensus here?
Yes, I wrote them down and we can incorporate those into, uh, a waiver of vested rights that the applicant would sign, uh, that would specify what they could continue to work on.
Okay, that sounds appropriate to, uh, to me. Are there any?
Yeah, excuse me, just a process question. From the time you do issue the certificate of appropriateness, that would then allow us to, uh, finalize the amendment, building department. How long would that process take to have that amendment approved?
You're talking about the, the, the new building permit applicant, the, I'm sorry, the, the new building permit?
Correct, uh, that we submitted the new set of plans and we're just waiting to have the, the counter there accept the, uh, the town of Southampton fee for that amendment. Once that, once, I guess they're waiting for your approval uh, or appropriateness, so some, before they'll accept that application, then it has to be reviewed. Then we can call for a strapping inspection, final strapping inspection, then a framing and then so on, all the other ones, so.
I don't have an answer for that right now. I'd have to talk to the building department and see what the timeframes are and how quickly they could turn around the, the new building permit.
I believe our, our decision making from filing of an application for a certificate of appropriateness, we have a window of 90 days for its consideration. So, and that's independent of whatever the building department might require for its own work. Okay. Seems that I think we've been around many corners tonight. I appreciate all the extra effort, uh, on the part of people to get together tonight. I will tell you that many hoops were jumped through, uh, to get this meeting. And I, I would say thanks to David as well for his help in pulling some things together. In fact, he probably pulled the town board meeting together last night. By calling attention to the fact that, uh, the Zoom information had not been circulated for people to to participate. So there's been a lot of kind of, uh, running, uh, fast here that, uh, you know, may have presented some problems, but I think we got through the major piece of business tonight. And unless there is further business appropriate to the agenda set for tonight. Dave?
Before we let Charles go, we need a, a Zoom meeting set up for the 18th, Charles. For the, uh, landmarks board meeting on the 18th at 7:00 PM.
I'll make it happen.
Thanks a lot.
A regular meeting?
Yeah, a regular meeting.
Regular meeting.
I'll make that happen.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, if there is no further business, this meeting is adjourned.